Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atomo City Council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and if everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Cavaness is here.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Before we go further, we did have a couple people that wanted to speak on B3, which was under our consent agenda, so I'm going to go ahead and let them speak. The first one would be Mitch Meider.
Yeah, good evening. I'm not going to waste too much of your time. I'd just like to make a comment about the person we're going to put on there. The person who burnt a lot of bridges politically at the state level and that type of stuff, I most certainly don't want to get into debate over it. You guys could debate me all night long. But, and I'm not talking from a standpoint of our damn. I'm talking from a standpoint of the operations of the Atomo Water Works and the day-to-day operations and some of that type of stuff that the Water Works has to go through to operate. And the law of bridges burned at the state level and not very popular. I don't think that's a good pick, folks. You guys make up your own mind, and I guess we'll see. But I just don't think that's a very good pick, and I think you guys should consider something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meider. I guess I would just go on record as saying I don't agree with you, that you're entitled to your opinion. These appointments to boards and commissions are not political appointments, so that should never enter into it. But I appreciate your comment. The other person that would like to speak is Mary Stewart.
Well, I simply wanted to indicate my appreciation for being considered to serve on that board. I may have burnt some bridges, but I've also built many over the years. And as a 33-year administrator at post-secondary level at our local community college, I've worked across 10 counties, various municipalities, between governmental agencies, written state and federal grants under governors and presidents, both political parties. So I just look forward to the opportunity. One of the things I would say about myself is that I may not always have all the information and all the knowledge I need to make an objective decision about the issue at hand, but I am a person who thoroughly researches and studies whatever the issue might be and then tries to make a decision that is in the best interest of the citizens, whether it be within a college area, a community, or whatever. So I would just indicate my thanks in that regard.
Thank you, Mary. And I guess the only thing I would add to that is any time I make an appointment to a board or commission, I always try to talk to the respective department head. And the general manager of the Water Works did support your appointment, so I just want that to be publicly known as well. Okay, moving on, we need a motion to approve tonight's city council agenda?
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
The next item is city administrators' report to council and citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Grant, our city administrator.
Thank you, honorable mayor. So I think we're getting close to the end of these reports, and we'll get something that council will be able to approve on a monthly basis. But I guess a note to the community, if you have a chance, we've gone through a number of work sessions over the past few weeks looking at the fiscal year '25 budget, and our interim finance director, Jessica Kinzer, has done a great job of explaining the various funds, our capital accounts, where our projects are at. And so I think that goes a lot into this status of the financial report for city funds, looking at where we're at currently here and what we're hoping to go into next year's budget, which is in process. We'll have a few items at the end of this meeting in a work session, and then I think we're looking at next Tuesday and then towards the end of the meeting on the 20th as well. And so we're nearing the end of the budget discussions, but there's a lot of good information, so I encourage you to go in if you have an opportunity, go back, look at those work sessions. There's a lot of good information there. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Good evening, mayor and council. I don't know that I have too much to update on, because I feel like you've been getting quite a bit of information. We have started the January reconciliation, which we think will resolve December, and so I'm hopeful that the second meeting in February will be able to get the December and January bank reconciliations to you. So we're keeping up on things. I think I've mentioned that we're still learning quite a bit in the finance department as we go through the budget process in terms of things that haven't been done on a monthly basis. And so we're trying to get everything really caught up through the end of January or the end of December. There's a few more things on the agenda tonight. The audit is not complete yet. There are still some entries that we are needing to make and some things from prior years that we are needing to clear out. So there is still a lot of work there, and it's really just at this point a time balance of how much time can I give to the audit and can other staff give to the audit, given everything else we have going on. But otherwise, things are happening. And I appreciate your time in attending all those budget workshops. I feel like there's a lot of information to share that will hopefully make future budget workshops, future years, a lot easier for future council members and for yourselves next year and in future years.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Jessica?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Phil, do you have anything else?
Nothing.
The next item is where I ask people in the audience if they'd like to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. And we do have one individual that wants to speak under G1, our first public hearing. And we have another individual that wants to speak on a non-agenda item that we'll get to towards the end of our meeting. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Because those are the only two white slips I've got.
I left one in a few moments ago.
Can you bring that up? Did you put it in the basket?
Ah, yes, sir.
Okay. So we have three people now. That'll be under public hearing number one as well.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, yes. Okay, we'll start with our public hearings then.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the consideration of a 10-year municipal lease and operating agreement between the City of Atomo and AAW Golf Group LLC.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we're going to continue the public hearing from our city council meeting on January 16th, and I'll turn this over to Phil Grant.
Thank you, honorable mayor. So this is an ongoing process that we've been working through, mandatory lease with prior operator ended in December 31st of 2023. City had issued requests for proposals to interested operators to assume the operations moving forward. As you remember, we had three entities submit proposals, and city council interviewed each of them, ultimately selecting Hannah Wilson, doing business as AAW Golf Group LLC. The attached municipal lease and operating agreement was updated from a previous document. It was reviewed by the city attorney, Mr. Wilson. Following some negotiation, the attached was approved and executed by Mr. Wilson and is now before-hued to authorize the mayor to execute that agreement on behalf of the city. And it is set for a public hearing due to the length of contract. Anything more than three years by state code requires an public hearing. So there is, from my perspective, there is no dispute or anything with the agreement. It's a formality that we're required to uphold. And welcome any questions from the city council.
Does city council have any questions for Phil?
Yes, I do. So administrator, I just have a quick question on page eight, section four, point 17. It's the high school and IHHC golf teams. And then just, my specific question is, it says, like, the high school golf team be permitted to use practice at a reduced fee and competitions at no charge? Is that, and then Indian Hills would be practicing competitions at a reduced fee? Is that pretty, because we didn't have this prior, correct?
No, that is language that was in the last agreement.
And so that's just pretty standard for, like, the competition, the cost and stuff?
It's the same language that was in the prior agreement, so I believe that would be, I'm familiar with that from working out there under his staff people.
I just didn't under, I didn't know why for Atomo the competition was at no cost and then for Indian Hills it's at a reduced fee. I didn't know if that was because of the size or college versus high school.
It was what was negotiated at the time. It might be the, as far as charging fees or anything, any revenue that's generated from the college versus the high school. I don't know specifics, just that was the language that was there prior and agreed to by both parties.
Any other questions from council for Phil? Since this is a public hearing, I'll ask if anybody in the audience would like to address the council on this specific item. If not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 202024, approve the 10-year municipal lease and operating agreement between the City of Atomo and AAW Golf Group LLC for operations of the Cedar Creek Golf Course for 2024 to 2034. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 202024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Atomo Park Playground Equipment Project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I think Gene Ratchy, our parks director, is going to address this.
Thank you, your honor. Atomo Parks Foundation has received a grant from the Atomo Regional Legacy Foundation for $30,000 for new playground equipment for Atomo Park. Bids on this project will be received and opened on March 6, 2024 at 2:00 p.m. The playground equipment will be installed by parks employees and volunteers during the summer of 2024.
Does council have any questions for Gene? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments that this is a public hearing? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 222024, approving the plan, specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Atomo Park Playground Equipment Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 222024.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thanks, Gene.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the sanitary sewer spot repair project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and our public works director, Philip Furtman, I believe, is going to handle this.
Thank you, mayor. So these are projects for open joints and fill pipe in the sanitary sewer system at various locations around the city. These are going to be internal repairs. What they do is they'll put a liner down there, and it's soft, and they'll form it to the inside of the pipe and cure UV, radiate UV light. These are all older clay pipes. It's either a single joint or a short section of pipe that's been, that's in bad shape. Don't feel it's worth digging the whole street up, excavating down, having to back it up. So it's not a huge cost savings over the conventional way of repairing pipe, but it is a lot less disruptive, and it's very comparable cost once you take into account you have to cut up the street, put it back in, and disrupt traffic. So anyway, it's super, one project, and I plan on bringing this as an annual program to areas like this where we can repair pipe without having to ditch some stuff.
Does council have any questions for Philip? What location is this at, Philip?
Can't recall the list. There's four locations, so this would be four repairs. I remember the size of the pipe coming off the streets they're on. There's two eight-inch pipes, and then 18, I think, and a 10. So they vary, vary in length from four feet long to 10 feet long.
Thank you.
And just for transparency for the public, what, how will this be paid for?
This is out of the sewer fund.
Any other questions for Philip? Since this is a public hearing, has anybody in the audience had any questions, comments they'd like to make? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 392024, approving the plan, specifications, formal contract, and estimated cost for the sanitary sewer spot repair project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 392024.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed reallocation of unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes series 2022A of Atomo, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe our interim finance director, Jessica Kinzer, is going to address this.
Yes, your honor. This is a bond that was borrowed in 2022, and there was $250,000 specifically that was for the city to utilize for different grant matches. And we are 18 months since the date of that borrowing and have not utilized that funding with the move into the depot. It was recognized that there were some building improvements that needed to take place there, including the installation of some sort of air conditioning. And I think the mayor can agree, like, we'll need the air conditioning.
We need that.
Yes. And so the recommendation is to move forward with reallocating these bond proceeds so that work can begin immediately on identifying the air conditioning process and method and getting that underway before we need it.
And as Councilwoman Galloway is always saying, for transparency to the public, I want people to understand that, you know, not only do we need the central air conditioning in that building while city halls there for the next year and a half, but it also will make it much more attractive when the city is wanting to rent that space out to other entities in the future, because there is no central air conditioning in the building right now. The boiler system's been replaced, so I think the boiler system for the heat is in good shape, but there was never any central air. You have to have central air, so it's money that's going to be well spent. It's not a frivolous kind of expenditure, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Does council have any questions for Jessica? Boy, everybody's quiet tonight. Okay, if not, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments or ask any questions? If not, I go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 432024, instituting proceedings to take additional action and improving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes series 2022A of the City of Atomo, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 432024. So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on ordinance number 3223 2024, amending the municipal code of the City of Atomo, Iowa by amending section 3114A entitled Fees and Charges Costs.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and our interim finance director, Jessica Kinzer, is going to handle this item as well.
Yes, this can be a little bit misleading, because this is the section that is the first part of the ordinance that sets sewer fees and rates. However, what this, this specific 31-14, from season A, really talks about how funds are supposed to be used in the setting up of the sewer improvement fund. And the sewer improvement fund, per this ordinance right now, can only be used for treatment plant improvements. We have a lot of work coming up related to sewer separation, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that tonight. You've been talking about it for quite a few meetings with Philip already, and as we looked at the sewer construction fund, we would like to start using a little bit of these funds in the next fiscal year to cash finance some of the work that is to be done on Division Two. And so this fund, it receives its revenue from the sewer operations fund. There's $500,000 annually that is transferred in. We are still proposing that transfer to occur as we would start to look at the drawdown of this fund as projects go on. But giving us the additional uses as part of the amendment to this ordinance would allow us to be able to look at more than just treatment plant improvements for the funds to be spent on and to be a broader sewer system as a whole type of use.
Does council have any questions for Jessica? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they'd like to make on this particular item? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32232024, amending the municipal code of the City of Atomo, Iowa by amending section 3114A entitled Fees and Charges Costs. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of ordinance number 32232024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32222024, amending the City of Atomo, Iowa code of ordinances, chapter 12, elections, and adopting the nomination by petition manner of election for the City of Atomo pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 45. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of ordinance number 32222024.
Move the recommendation.
Second. Okay, I believe Phil's going to take this.
Historically, the City of Atomo has included the use of primaries in the nomination process when the total number of eligible candidates was greater than two times the number of eligible seats. Chapters 44 and 45 of the Iowa Code provide options for the nomination process, which does not include primary nor runoff elections, should a city choose to adopt either of those methods. Following a work session of the city council held on January 16th, 2024, the city attorney drafted the attached ordinance to adopt Iowa Code, Chapter 45, in regards to the nomination process for candidates for city office. The ordinance repealed and replaces sections 12-1 through 12-18. Though essentially, this is something that, it actually had been brought up a couple of years ago about looking at eliminating the primary process. City council at that time held a public hearing, and nobody had presented information or shown up to speak at that time, and so the issue was dropped at that moment. It came up again recently, and like I said, during that work session, city council, I'd say unanimously at the time, had decided that this was an option that they wanted to look at, so the attorney drafted that and gave it for you. As this is an ordinance, it would require three readings. This would only be the first of those readings, so there's tonight and a couple of other opportunities for the public to understand what's going on and weigh in. And I understand we have a couple of individuals that want to speak on this tonight.
Yes, but before I get to the individuals, does council have any questions for Phil?
I have a few comments and questions. So I guess, I guess I have a little bit of trepidation with this, and I was hoping that we would have a little bit more information about, like, the benefits. I mean, we can all do our own research, obviously, too, but I think in whole, the benefits of primaries versus the, I guess, the concerns. And we, and Chris did a great job of providing those, like, our voter turnout and the cost of elections, too, which I think have shown or brought this forward. So, but I guess my other concern is, I haven't, I don't know of the rest of the council, but I haven't really heard from the public on their thoughts and ideas. I think I heard from one person regarding this, because in the end, this really is our people that we serve, like, they're voting. So are we, I guess my question for us all, if we approve this, are we taking away one of their votes? I guess would be my question or food for thought for everyone. Are we taking, and again, I know, again, we've talked about, all of us here have talked about the cost, which I think was about $10,000, correct, Chris? And what was our voter turnout from our last primary?
Very low.
Very low.
You don't look over, don't you? What?
Our last primary.
The number of voter turnout? 2,995.
So pretty low. So, but again, I think that just knowing both sides helps us ensure that we are making an informed decision. So those are just kind of my comments and thoughts before we move on to the other people.
Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
I got one comment. I don't, in this particular situation, I don't think we're taking anything from voters, either vote primary and general or just the general. We're not taking nothing from the voters. I mean, I just might.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's food for thought, so I'm asking us all to consider it, to discuss it, and, you know, just food for thought.
And this is only the first reading, too.
Yeah, for sure.
I guess my one question would be is, if this is voted down tonight, talking to your side, if this is voted down tonight, is there still an opportunity to bring this to the table and continue discussing it and get more opinions from the community on what they would like to do going forward?
Yeah, so the way that it works, like, so there's three readings of the ordinance, unless the council would elect to waive the second and third reading, which isn't on the table for tonight. If it is voted down in any of those three, it is not carried. So if it's done, if it's voted down tonight, then it is done until it is brought up in some format in the future. If it's voted through tonight, then voted down next time, same thing, it would be dead at that point until it was reincarnated in some format. So, yeah, then those would be your options.
I think in the history of primaries in our community in the city, those persons who are successful in the primary are generally successful in the final election. So what we're doing is spending another $10,000 or $12,000 to accomplish basically nothing. We're not denying anybody a vote, and we're certainly not circumventing the system.
And I guess just a couple of comments I'd like to make. I don't disagree with anything that council member just said. In fact, I personally think sometimes doing away with a primary would also increase the number of people that would come to a general election, because a lot of times when people's candidates don't get through a primary, they don't always end up going ahead and voting at the general election. The other comment I'd like to make is, having experienced it myself, sometimes when there's a real short period between a primary and a general election, it leaves candidates a very small window, some years, to even campaign, and most people aren't going to And most people aren't going to want to spend the money to get expensive signs until they know they've made it through the primary. As a point in case, this last time, there's only six weeks between the primary and the general election. So if you didn't get your signs before the primary, you only had six weeks to get them ordered, get them put out for people to even see. So from my perspective, another benefit of just having a general election, it gives candidates a lot longer time to actively campaign for themselves. So I mean, I agree with Doc, Kara, there's.
You can call me doctor, okay.
There's a lot of pros and cons to this, but I think we need to, like you said, look at all the pros and cons. You can look at this from all kinds of different perspectives. And according to our city clerk, there's a lot of towns that have been away with general elections or primary elections. This isn't something new that Atomo's just come up with on its own. There's more towns in Iowa, I believe what Chris told me, that have been away with primary elections than have them anymore. So this has been a pretty standard practice where people don't really see the benefit, and you can save yourselves at least in Atomo, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars every time you don't have a primary election. But I do think we do need to hear from the public and see what other people think. So we do that. Does anybody else have any comments they want to make?
Well, to be transparent, I'm actually for removing the primary. However, I do want to recognize what councilperson Cali says. I mean, it is, we should include the public and give them time to weigh in on it. You know, that's a fair thing to do since they did put us up here. So I just want to recognize that I do agree that we, we would, you know, take a little time to get at least the public's opinion and their concerns on the matter as well.
And that's why there'll be three readings to allow for that public input, so I appreciate that, Bill. Okay, we have two individuals that would like to speak on this item. First of all, I'll call Peg Lozio forward. And please state your name and your address, and everybody will be given three minutes to make their comments.
Thank you, Council Mayor. My name is Peg Lozio, twenty-three oh one North Port. I would like to talk about this election process. Having an election is an important part of this process. Having a primary, when there's a lot of candidates, helps citizens get to know the candidates, to know what their stand is on a variety of issues. We need to see them, we need to see them respond to public questions and comments. The newspaper article gives us a good start, but we need to additionally see the candidates in the public. Then the regular election comes, which gives the citizens additional chance to get to know the top vote getters better. The cost of primary, while they do cost money, we do not want this to be a deciding factor on how we select our elected representatives. We want the best candidates for our council. I ask that you table this item so that you can study the issue of primary elections to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. Next, we have Ashley.
Good evening, Ashley in Row, one fifty-eight Vogel Avenue. I guess let me start with, I watched the work session where this item came up, and I was surprised at how brief the discussion was, largely revolving around the cost of the election and the outcome being the same generally as what we get in the general election. And so I do appreciate tonight, Councilmember Galloway opening up with some of the more nuances of this discussion. I am a voter, I do consider it revoking at least an opportunity to vote. Granted, I still have the opportunity to vote in the regular election the following month. However, you're revoking an opportunity to vote in a primary election, obviously, tonight. When I look at the history of voting rights in America, originally, it was only wealthy white men who were allowed to vote, property owners. And eventually, poor white men were given the right to vote. After the Civil War, black men were notionally given the right to vote and then shamefully denied it through the Jim Crow area. And then obviously, individuals who look like me, women, only got the right to vote here in the last century of America. So the better half of America, women at least, haven't gotten the right to vote. And so to me, having three minutes at a work session and three short readings is insignificant relative to the amount of time that the electorate has had to wait, the majority of electorates actually had to wait to exercise their right to vote. All that said, though, all that also, revoking that right to vote for a mere fifteen thousand dollars every two years, given what our new combined general fund levy, I think I got that right, is, is a little bit depressing as well. But with all that said, I'm not a zealot, I am a pragmatist. I, I, my gut tells me ultimately, it probably is wise to revoke the ability to vote in a primary election. I just think it needs to be done with more consideration, like Peg mentioned, maybe tabling it tonight, getting more input. Chapters forty-four and forty-five do acknowledge the way individuals are nominated for the city council. And yet, we haven't really discussed how that nomination changes. I read the code, it's, it looks like it's the filing deadline changes, which might actually change that campaign season, as you mentioned. How does that change in the campaign season? How does it affect candidates, who benefits, who loses? Will the League of Women Voters still have two forums if there's no longer a primary election? I think that's, that's one venue where all voters or all candidates have kind of equal face time and equal presentation. Because I think those are very important, I think that's sort of a question worth asking. And then there's a lot of election science, I'm a bit of an election science nerd. And so how do you get, how will the, what we call a mandate, how will the mandate to govern change for those people that are elected? What is the applicability of election science nerd here? What's the applicability of errors and possibility theorem? If we don't have a primary, we don't reduce the number of candidates for the general election. These are all things that I think are worth consideration. And if we don't table it tonight, maybe, you know, in second and third readings, I'd like to see at least in the packet, maybe, acknowledgement of what's changing in the nomination process and then, I guess, continuing discussion, kind of like we had, like I think, tonight before, you know, to Peg and myself.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and I think you gave us three minutes.
That's, the only other comment I guess I would make is, regardless of whether you have primary elections or you just have a general election, I would hope the League of Women Voters would take that as an opportunity to have as many community forums as they want to have. I mean, that's really on the League of Women Voters to determine how many community forums they want, regardless of how many elections there are.
Oh, yes.
Because I agree with you, the more times those candidates get a chance to speak to the public, because you can't always ask all the questions at one forum because they're time limited. So I would hope that the League of Women Voters would even have more forums in the future, whatever gets decided. And I think the other reason the council wants to have three readings, that'll be about a month and a half. So we're going to have a month and a half here where public can come to council meetings and share their opinions. So this isn't going to be done tonight, even if they approve the first reading. There's two more council meetings where this is going to get discussed. So there's a month and a half where the public is going to have an opportunity to come and share their viewpoint. Because I agree, it's important to hear from the public. So I do appreciate your comments.
And I would just, first, I would thank Ashley and Peg both for coming forward. And some of the things that Ashley said, kind of about that election process in Iowa, or in the chapter forty-five, right, forty-four and forty-five. So I do appreciate that, so I appreciate you bringing that forward, too. And I would also agree that if we don't table tonight and we continue to move forward, I would like to see some of the items that Ashley pointed out. Oh, I guess she could, I'm sorry, I was, I was just pointing to you to like, I'm so sorry, I don't want to make you stand up here for a moment. But anyways, that, like, how, what were the changes in some of those things that she talked about? But then also, oh man, I lost my train of thought, just give me a second. Oh, and just again, some of the benefits of primaries and, and then also, just around us, how many, again, we can all do our own research, but I think sometimes it's beneficial to have the same information presented, too, so that we all do have that information. But included in the packet, the benefits of primaries, again, we have the concern that we could put like the cost of the election turnout again over the last few years, like you did, Chris, that was great. And then also, just around us, who's doing primaries, who's not doing primaries? We can add that to our packet if we're looking at continuing to move forward.
Logan, while you're on the phone, do you have any comment you'd like to make about the City of Atomo possibly doing away with primary elections in the future? The pros and the cons to that? Do you have any legal opinion you'd like to give us tonight or not?
No, I think the ordinance before the council tonight is sort of the legal mechanics of how to accomplish it. If there are specific questions related to Iowa Code, Chapter Three Seventy-Six, is what governs city elections generally, and then provides for the adoption of Iowa Code, Chapter Forty-five, as a method to nominate. And also allows for the elimination of primaries in doing so. I'm happy to try to answer those or follow up with any council members.
Okay, does council have any specific questions for Logan?
Maybe we can get him a list, too.
Okay, if there's no other questions, don't you have anything else?
I got a comment if I can.
Okay.
I'm the one that, that brought up seeing if we can vote on getting rid of the primary, and I have three reasons why I did. One is there's the same people, poll workers, and they say they're really hurting to get volunteers, the younger generation, to come up and, and help. And the second reason I brought it up is, in the primary, five percent of the citizens voted, and the general, eight percent. So I think most of them spoke without speaking, but I'm all for going out into the public. But what we, we will hear a lot more than eight percent of the public, and that's because they're going to have the opinion and probably not going to vote anyway. The third one is, we spent ten thousand dollars of taxpayers' money this last election, and the same four people that was in the primary were in the general. So I'm looking at it as a financial point, too.
I would, I just make one comment. Yes, while it's disappointing that only five percent and eight percent are showing up, we don't remove voting rights because people don't show up. I just gonna, I just want to state that, Lee. And I know you're not saying like, remove like the general election and that kind of stuff, too, but I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I want to make sure, especially with Ashley, that we're not taking nothing away from the voters if we were voted to take away the primary. The same amount of voters, we're not saying now, hey, you can't vote in the general because we took away. Everyone still has that right to, to vote. Yeah, you can come on.
I think primarily what you're taking away is you're taking away resiliency in the election process. So if I were a voter for, we'll call it, the lowest vote getter in the primary, you're taking away my ability to support my low vote getter in the primary, to say, that was my first choice. I supported him, I supported her. Maybe I knew at that time that that, that he or she was not a viable candidate. Maybe I had no idea that I was a, that my vote was an unpopular vote and that my candidate was going to be the lowest voter. Now, you are denying me the opportunity to say, okay, my first choice candidate, low vote getter, didn't pan out. But I've had the, you're denying me the opportunity to look at the rest of the field and say, of who remains, who do I now want to vote for? That's what you're denying me the ability to do.
Thank you.
Just to say, so it, there may have only been a little bit of conversation at the work session, but that's part of the reason we have the work sessions, it was brought up, and it, there wasn't a lot of dissent amongst the council at that time, which is why it was presented. It sounded like, to what I heard and other staff, was that this was the direction the council was looking to go. So the option was there before you, and I don't have a real big feeling one way or the other. I just thought I was listening to what the council had said at the work session.
Well, no, and I appreciate that, Bill. I just want to say that even when we have work sessions, too, that there's, we come to work sessions, we learn information, but then we also do our own research after and before the actual votes happen. And, you know, we did give, there was that guidance from the majority of the council, and so, but at the same time, I mean, there's still, we still learn in that kind of stuff, too, after.
I think we are not denying anyone the opportunity to vote. If they don't go to the polls and vote, they deny themselves that opportunity. And I believe that it's important to know that the number of people running for any office is not diminished by eliminating the primary. Same number of people can run, no matter whether it's ten or twenty, in a general election. So we're not denying anybody an opportunity. And I'm very disheartened to think that the general public doesn't show up more than they have to vote in any kind of election, but specifically in a city election.
Anybody else have any final comments before we take a roll? Okay, Chris will go ahead and take the role for the first.
Councilmember Galloway?
No.
Councilmember Hoffman?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
No.
Motion fails. Resolution number twenty-three twenty-four, approving applications for residential and commercial tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan, totaling two million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars and fourteen cents, and subject to review by the local assessor. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number twenty-three twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
I believe Zach's going to handle this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Because there's some new members on the council, and also because we're going to have to look at the Urban Revitalization Plan again later this year, I'm going to give a little bit of background. But this is a pretty routine annual resolution in its whole. So the City of Atomo has an urban revitalization plan where we've opted to use some of the powers that are afforded by state code to do urban revitalization instead of by certain land uses, and that applies to the whole city. So this is available to any property owner in the city, and it includes in the Urban Revitalization Plan a schedule for tax abatement. If you improve the value of residential property by ten percent or more, you're eligible to apply for tax abatement. If you improve the value of commercial property by twenty percent or more, you're, you can apply for the tax abatement, and it's available by right. You don't have to seek a development agreement or anything like that. And we have schedules for those abatements that are close to the most they can be. They are at the most they can be for commercial right now. For multifamily, we have a ten-year sliding scale abatement that starts at a hundred percent and then steps down by twenty percent every two years. Until the last two years, you're only getting a twenty percent abatement. For residential, we have a three-year, one hundred percent for single-family and duplex. And then for property in the historic district, for a historic rehabilitation, we have a five-year, one hundred percent abatement for residential property. We're going to have to do a revised and restated Urban Revitalization Plan this year, no matter what, because the legislature passed a new law that affects urban revitalization and is going to include some changes that we'll have to adopt. Those are going to include, we'll have to have minimum assessments for the commercial property, and we'll have to do a new application for our program to just check some of the requirements that are in the state code. But for now, this is dealing with this year's abatements, and we received four residential, three commercial tax abatement applications. These are due in January of the month after work that qualifies as complete. And so during the month of January, we received our tax abatements for these seven projects. They total a value of one million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and six. It was one new home, one new garage, three new commercial buildings that applied. And it is, it is the onus of the program to apply for the tax abatement. You can't get it automatically by doing the project, you do have to also submit the application. We do try to publicize that program, but there's definitely ways that we'll want to work in the future to do even better to reach more projects. If this resolution does approve those applications, then they're sent to the assessor to review to make sure that they qualify. The other thing, in addition to approving this, that we do want to kind of understand, is from the council, in the amended tax abatement plan that we're going to present next year, if you have any feedback on that, it'd be valuable. One of the other changes that is going to be affected here is that not all taxes will be abated in the same way they were. There's some levies that are going to be exempt, and I think there are levies that relate to the school district. And so if you do want to see us increase any of those schedules to accommodate that difference, that's something we can look at, we can look at a residential schedule that is more than three years, a hundred percent. It's always just a balancing test of wanting to online that new revenue because it's good for growth and, you know, all those things. But we do also want to provide reasonable incentive to get people to do projects and want things to be consistent. one thing that we do exist in, ladies, people don't try to do home improvement projects in part because they're worried about tax. So tax abatement does help allay some of those concerns.
Does the council have any questions for Zach?
Are you at liberty to tell us who those persons were that applied for this?
Yeah, in the packet is every application, it includes their names.
Do you find that more people are applying? I feel like this list was, is bigger than it has been.
I think that this list might actually be a little smaller than last year. I don't think that we've gotten a huge rush in any particular year. We do mention the program when people apply for permits a lot, but by the time the project's finished and then in April, January, sometimes it is not the case that people apply.
If people use funds like a re- rehabilitation program to add onto their property, can they still apply for this tax abatement?
Yeah, anything that's gonna increase the taxable value of property by more than 10% on the residential side. So that can be remodel, it could be addition, it can be new construction.
New garage.
New garage, yeah.
Is the abatement on the full value or just the improved value?
Just the improved value. It only abates the taxes on the improved value. And one thing that people sometimes expect and isn't the case is if your assessed value goes up for reasons that aren't the improvement, like everybody got their reevaluations in this last year, those taxes are not subject to the abatement. So if you built a house that was worth, let's say, $90,000, to use your own numbers, and then your land was worth $10,000, you are paying, you've always been paying taxes on the $10,000. You could apply for the abatement, and then for three years, you don't pay for the taxes on the $90,000. But if your home gets reassessed and they add another $50,000 of value, you do have to pay that, because that's not the value from the new construction, not just the value of adjusting, the way the evaluation, the assessor did the reassessments and that sort of thing. So that did come up for people this year. They thought they were having their taxes abated and they had a tax bill on that revalue for the reassessment, which is unfortunate.
Any other questions for Zach? Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 24, 2024, approving and authorizing addendum to grant administration contract between the City of Etomo and Area 15 Regional Planning Commission for the 307 East Main Upper Story Housing Project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 24, 2024.
Do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and Zach, I believe you're gonna take this one also?
Yes, the 307 East Main Upper Story Housing Project was being developed block grant program. The city was awarded a grant of $500,000. The total cost of the project was $602,515, of which the grant is, would cover nine, or $498,779. The owner covered most of the balance, which is $88,773, and the city's share was just under $15,000, which would be about $5,000 per unit, which is what we typically provide as match for an upper story grant application. In closing the program, Iowa Economic Development Authority has recommended that the council adopt an addendum to the grant administration agreement that we have with Area 15 Regional Planning. Area 15 does a lot of our grant administration on CDPG programs. And the reason for that is basically an acknowledgement of how to best use resources. We're able to collaborate with the other counties and cities in that regional planning area and share grant writers, grant administrators, and then they're able to go through the state required trainings to operate at a really high level when they do this grant administration. Because the CDPG program and all these other state programs have a lot of boxes that have to be ticked, and if you miss things, it results in money being clawed back. So there's a lot of value in us from that relationship. And so they administer these, and this is basically just adopting some language that relates to record retention and just, it's the language that was recommended by IEDA. It's not a substantial change really, but it just relates to how the contractor has to maintain records for a certain period of the work that was funded by the grant.
Does the council have any questions for Zach? Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 25, 2024, approving additional transfer of funds through December 31st, 2023, as presented by the Finance Department. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 25, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, and the next four, I believe, are in our finance director, Jessica Kinzer's gonna handle, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, this item, I believe I had mentioned at our last meeting that we were still working on debt service things and figuring out exactly where interest and which funds were contributing to the debt service fund, and we got that figured out. So these are mostly completing the transfers to move the, move money from the funds that are contributing towards certain loans and bonds to basically move them to the debt service fund where the payments were made December 1st. And then there are a few items on here that are more budget cleanup items that as we've gone through, there's just been more things that we've discovered that weren't initially part of last year's budget and that we are working on. I can share that as part of the FY24 budget amendment, you will get a large collective list of these. I would say it's still very much in flux as we're going through the budget process right now and trying to figure things out, but that list will come to you for FY24 in the near future, and then you'll see that as part of FY25 budget process when we set that public hearing.
Does the council have any questions for Jessica? Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 30, 2024, set February 20th, 2024 at 5:30 PM as the date for our public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed $6 million general obligation capital loan notes, ECP1, to City of Etomo, State of Iowa for essential corporate purposes and providing publication of notice thereof. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 30, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Jessica?
Yeah, so I will start out with some clarifying information for you all and the public for, that applies to all of these. This is setting a public hearing for the purpose of a pre-levy for us to include as part of the property tax certification for fiscal year '25. And so that does not mean that you are borrowing money right now, but it says that we are planning to talk about this again in the future, and when we do that, we want to ensure that we have an amount of money on hand to pay a projected principal and interest payment that would be due in the fiscal year that starts July 1st. So December 1st interest payment and then June 1st interest and principal payment. So this is just setting the public hearing for you to then be able to consider taking action on whether or not there is a pre-levy on our FY25 budget sheets. That said, this specifically, when we, when we go to legal counsel with our project list, they then break them down by essential corporate purpose or general corporate purpose. And the one that we're talking about here is essential corporate purpose, which includes some of the following items under this umbrella of authority. The demolition program, cemetery office and maintenance building, cemetery caving, court lighting in parks, a number of police vehicles and equipment purchases, the BNSF levy closure and fire vehicles as well. And so those all come under this umbrella, and what this essentially means too is that we would basically be looking for, you know, your, your authority to move forward with holding that public hearing at the next meeting, so that we would then have time to incorporate that change into getting all the public hearing documents and ready, I think, on February 29th for a March 5th council meeting. I think that's what it is.
Does the council have any questions for Jessica regarding this item?
Yeah, Jessica, can you just kind of explain, so I think unless you identified that it nears about 5.5 million, but then there's a cushion, because I think this is, this is to approve 6 million. Can you just explain that little bit of cushion for transparency?
Yeah, so, so basically, as our bond counsel is putting this together, that is what they're doing, is they're trying to basically, you know, round things up to a number. So, I mean, if there was one of these projects that came in or something that between now and when you go to borrow would be for more money, that's where you would have the ability to, to go up a little bit higher. So the other part of that too is just generally, like when we're talking about the cost of borrowing, you know, financial advisor, legal, any fees, you know, those get included as part of that total that you're borrowing as well. So setting it a little bit higher covers those costs, since we don't have any funds in the debt service fund to cover those.
And if you build in a little cushion, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to use it either.
Correct.
And then to clarify too, any like approval or proposed bonding would come in to the council for that approval, May and June, or May or June, correct?
We were actually talking about that today, and it's probably, no one wants to talk about special meetings, but maybe a special meeting at the end of April to really get that decided so that you can use the month of May to hold the, set the public hearing, hold the public hearings that you would need to do for that in order to then have a closing on any bond proceeds after July 1st.
Any other questions for Jessica? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 31, 2024, set February 20th, 24 at 5:30 PM as the date for our public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes, GCP2, of the City of Etomo, State of Iowa for general corporate purposes and providing publication of notice thereof. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 31, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Jessica?
Yes, so general corporate purpose is different than essential, that's generally where you see any building improvements classified. In this one, GCP2 specifically covers those items that were presented to you for Bridgeview improvements, specifically totaling $420,000. $700,000 is the maximum that you can have for a general corporate purpose bond, and so that's where it is set not to exceed $700,000. So if there was a situation that came up between now and when you would want to borrow, there would be still authority there for you all to consider increasing that amount as you consider decreasing it as well in any conversations.
For transparency, would you just go ahead and briefly go through the items for Bridgeview?
Yeah, Bridgeview, looking at LED video boards and signage, some roof repairs, a new combination oven, or replacement combination oven, I should say. Some theater improvements that we talked about included some furniture items and some of the back of the house stuff, exterior waterproofing and access, and ramp and stairs replacement near the loading dock.
Does the council have any questions for Jessica regarding this item?
Yes, so just to clarify, so the, on February 20th, we're going to be, the public hearing is going to be to authorize up to $700,000, so about $280,000 more than what they're needing, or what they're requesting that we would be looking at.
So for pre-levy purposes, so this is not actually borrowing, but it's basically setting it at the maximum level that you can set a general corporate purpose bond at.
So when they actually vote on it down the road, they can vote on a lesser amount?
100%, yep.
Is there, and I get that emergencies happen and stuff too, so I guess just, so is there bene, besides like, it's just a lot of, I, my thoughts aren't coming out clearly, but that's like, it's $280,000 more, and so I just, so the thought, and I know it's up to, and it's pre-levy and that kind of stuff too, but is there, aside like thinking of an emergency, is there like benefit to that?
Legal counsel said it this way, so I would say that is, yes, that's, that's what they've done to give us the maximum flexibility as possible. But again, this is not actually borrowing anything.
Correct.
That won't happen until later.
So when you go to borrow the money, you can set it reduced?
No, I understand that, but I'm just...
And the pre-levy is really only that first year of payments. So we're only talking about that first year, and we're establishing that to have the authority to be able to have those funds to pay rather than deferring interest and deferred capital and paying interest only and things like that. So, which even then, we wouldn't have the funds without doing this. This is the best financial way to get to where we're looking to go, regardless of what we end up borrowing. That first year really isn't a lot of dollars, and if we have projects that come off, all it does is that amount stays there and just pays down whatever we do have. So it's less to pay, it shifts other year payments.
And I believe that, I don't, I'm pretty sure this is the right number, is that our financial advisor has sort of plugged in, which is on our long-term debt worksheet, principal and the interest in the amount of $254,100. And so no matter what you borrow, if you approve the pre-levy at the public, after the public hearings at the next meeting, then that is what will be on our debt worksheet. And then based on what you ultimately do choose to borrow for in May-June timeframe, then that's when the final sort of debt service schedule will be developed, but that first year payment would not change, assuming the pre-levy is approved at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jessica? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 32, 2024, set February 20th, 24 at 5:30 PM as the date for our public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes, GCP3, of the City of Etomo, State of Iowa for general corporate purposes and providing publication of notice thereof. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 32, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
One more time, Jessica.
One, one more time, so this grouping is kind of everything that was building equipment or improvement that was not Bridgeview. And so that's the financial software, flooring replacement at the South Fire Station, the IT backup server replacements, as well as just the general server replacements and the Tier 2 sand purchase, as well as the money that would be needed for the MCG fiber and network equipment for the non-enterprise fund. So kind of all those locations that aren't supported by a, a fund that acts like a business.
Does the council have any questions for Jessica?
Actually, I have questions. Could, off the top of your head, could you tell us, out of the first, I'm sorry, I need to just sit closer. Out, out of the amount that we are recommended to bond for our city, how much of a percentage are we at? Are we like at a good rate if we accepted the most amount that you've recommended? Yeah, so we actually, we talked with Tim Oswald about that today, I apologize that we don't have that. He, he was thinking that with the bond as proposed, that we would be looking at somewhere less than 60% of, of our debt capacity with any existing debt. So we have requested that information from him, and so we'll be getting that to you. It might be something to present at kind of the next budget workshop and just as a for your information item in moving forward.
Any other questions for Jessica? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 34, 2024, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the 2023 RFP number three, Hamilton Street pavement repair project. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 34, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So this RFP was to repair a piece of Hamilton Street, which was damaged by a fallen tree. The tree was purposely cut down by a contractor. Their insurance company has paid the city to reimburse us for this cost. This is just closing out the project. It was a for move and replace project.
Does the council have any questions for Philip? Now, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number 36, 2024, approving professional services construction agreement between the City of Etomo and Mistra and Kim Incorporated for the Blake's French Sewer Base Aid Division's two and three projects. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 36, 2024.
Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number thirty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phillip.
All right, well, knowing how invisible, I guess, the audio visual system is here, I tried this, I don't know if I can turn it some way where y'all can see it better. It's just a, a map of divisions two and three for the sewer separation project. So the reason I brought it up here is because this agreement for construction services is for divisions two and three, which two is the one in blue here, and division three is in green. When we first started these projects, there was only one project here. It wasn't two different projects. When we got that stag grant for, was now division two, we had sort of split that off. And for the construction services, we decided to keep this as, as one contract for both these projects combined because there's going to be a lot of overlap between the two. They're, they're right next to each other. Depending on how, how many crews are working, we anticipate we can have one inspector cover both the projects. Now, if they end up running like three or four crews between the two projects, we'll probably have to bring a second inspector down. Or if they're paving that day, we'll have to bring a second inspector down because those are full-time jobs to inspect the paving contractor. But even if they do go to two or three, or three or four crews, that'll shorten the length of the project up so it's not really going to increase our inspection cost.
And those are contracted inspectors, right?
Yes, so.
On city staff.
Correct, so this agreement is with B and K Engineering. They designed the project and this will be for construction services and also for general services as well. So the general services are tasks such as reviewing shop drawings, interpreting plans and specs, reviewing and certifying payments, making site visits, reviewing shop drawings. The site inspection is the onsite inspector. And so because this is going to cover divisions two and three combined, and division three is not even completed design yet, we thought it wasn't a good idea to let a contract right now for the entirety of both projects. So what this does is cover the first twenty months of the combined projects, which is what we anticipate division two will be. So when division two gets close to being done, we'll come back with an amendment to finish out division three. But until we know exactly what it's going to look like, we don't think it's right to lock them into a number for that inspection yet until we know more about the projects. I got Randy and Ted from B and K here if anybody has any questions on the services they're going to provide.
Does council have any questions for Phillip? Any questions for the gentleman?
Yeah, Randy Johnson, Bean Strand Kim, so we're the design engineers for this project. And like Phillip was saying, when we envisioned this a year ago, well, actually, I'll be in step back. So we've been helping for over twenty years do sewer separation for the city. This is phase eight of ten phases that the city needs to be in compliance with D N R for separating combined sewers. You don't want the sewer going directly to the river. That's just, you know, a change that has happened. So what we did with, when we started design, the city had the opportunity for the stag grant, separated the blue area, made sure we had the match portion covered. And now we're, we're finishing up the design of division three. So division three is going to be twelve to thirteen million. If you remember division one, Main Street, Bird Street down there, they would have two digging crews and a paving crew. And that's hard to cover, make sure, you know, there, you know, that we're not missing some details that we, we need to make sure I X getting connected correctly. So like Phil was saying, the, the benefit of us being here with one person, we should be able to be in that same area. We want to coordinate with traffic control with the contractors. But the one thing, there would be times when you'll probably need a second person for a week if there's a lot of activity going on. And so I'm, we're just here, you know, requesting that your consideration for us to continue to help you all.
You can get those extra inspectors pretty quickly.
Oh, yeah, we, we have a staff, we have nine different offices, so we have plenty of inspectors. I mean, and we're, we're busy, but with something of this nature, yeah, we would have priority of bringing somebody else.
And it won't come up like in one day. You'll, you plan the paving out enough ahead of time to coordinate someone out here. Or if they're coordinating bringing a third or fourth street down between the two projects, you'll know that. It won't just show up one day. So.
Well, now you jinxed us.
You bring it back and then to you prior. So you, you, you have the final say and you explain why we need a special person.
Yeah, so twenty months, I should add, would be pretty much what we anticipate division two to be completed. So then we just have a final project, so we have a really good idea and understanding what's going on.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four, approving amendment to professional services agreement for engineering services between the city of Atomo and Bean Strand Kim Incorporated for the Blake's Branch Phase Eight Division Two Sewer Separation Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Second. There are ten to turn, Phillip?
There are more than three though, okay? Anyway, so this is, that last one was the construction services and general services for division two and part of division three. This is the design of divisions two and three. So like I said before, when we signed this original contract back in twenty twenty-one, there was no division three in this area, it was only division two. When we got that stag grant, we separated off the area around Fourth Street between the, the stadium and the school. And now, so we added Plum Street to that as well. Plum Street is going to be a separate project we did locally. In order to kind of button everything up and get a project the right size for that grant, we brought that into what was then division two. By separating off division two, the E P A administered the stag grant. There was some paperwork, some administrative issues that we had to do that weren't anticipated either. And then also, when we first did division two, we expected ten million dollars for the construction. And between divisions two and three is going to be nineteen million dollars of construction between those two, two projects. So we've increased the amount of work they designed, or the, the amount of construction they designed by ninety percent. And they're asking for another five point seven percent design fee to cover the cost of splitting these two projects up, adding Plum Street to it, and also helping to administer the E P A grant and give us some, some extra paperwork, extra specifications that we had to include that wasn't being anticipated.
So that's the additional thirty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Correct, on top of the original design fee. So if you have any other questions on that, to Randy or Ted can answer it as well.
Council, have any questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four, waiving building permit fees for the Atomo Community Schools tennis courts project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four.
Move the recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Simonson.
Thank you. The Atomo Schools have proposed to construct a tennis courts at Center Avenue. Actually, yes, they're already on their way to constructing a tennis courts. The council's previously allocated seven hundred thousand C I P funds to assist in that project. And outside of practice times, the courts will be available for public use. The existing tennis courts in the Atomo Park system are in poor condition. These new courts will lessen the need for new courts on our park side and also provide a venue for recreation and tennis tournaments. They have, the schools have requested building permit fees be waived. We do routinely waive fees for projects that are undertaken by the city and often due on city property. In this case, the city's a partner in the project, but it's not being taken by the city and it's not on city property. So we think the request for a fee waiver does need to come to the council to vote on it. Building permit fees for this project, based on a roughly two million dollar project, we would estimate the fees are going to be about ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, although we haven't had the valuation presented yet to totally send that to holding.
Does council have any questions for Zach?
I don't have questions, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I guess it kind of goes back to what I said at the work session that we had, I think, last week. Just, you know, we, we are a partner in this, but we've also, and we've allocated seven hundred thousand, but we've also already paid, what, about a hundred thousand?
Seven hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand for a plan that did not come to fruition. And then it goes back to, again, what I, I identified multiple times through this is that we've been the ones kind of putting that money upfront and kind of.
And just for transparency, the, the plan was changed, which is why that hundred and six thousand.
Correct, it was changed. But in that meeting that we were asked to pay for the plan, I identified, again, that, you know, it, we're the ones putting the money up and when are the other entities going to put money up? So at that time that we approved that money, that plan had not changed and wasn't going to change.
Any other comments by council or questions?
Uh, just a comment for the public, that this particular item, although it's through the community school district, which is my employer, it is not an item that I need to abstain for. It does not affect my contract as an educator or any funds that come to me in salary. So this particular item I will be voting on, however, obviously there will be others that I will have to abstain from.
Okay, let's see. Any other questions or comments from council?
So the, the project did start out as being a joint project between the city, the council, city and the school district and the Friends and Parks. Well, the Friends and Parks had committed that they were going to contribute. We hadn't seen any donated funds at that point, they were going to commit to that. And so with the school district taking over the project, they also assumed the risk of whatever funds that the friends are able to contribute or not. And so we, we do have that third that we don't have to worry about anymore. Also, by moving off the property, we were initially going to be putting in seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is now seven hundred thousand. I'm not aware of where the other fifty thousand would come from at this point. They would still like to see towards the project. So we do kind of reserve that as part of the cost to offset some of the, the lost costs, we'll say, for the, the design work that was initially done. But in the spirit of a cooperative project and one where we are partnering in, these are going to be open to the public for public use. A project that the city is not going to have to take on, on its own to, to contribute, is not going to have ongoing maintenance costs, all of those things. I think for, you know, ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, it's, it's a small amount of money to destroy a relationship over. And so I, I hope that we can see our way to be able to consider this and waive these fees towards the development of this project.
I guess I would push back and say that if ten thousand dollars is going to destroy a relationship where we've already commit, we already put money toward a project and we continued even with that, we didn't say, hey, we're going to only give you six hundred thousand, you know, we gave the max that we could. Had we been able to do seven fifty, we probably would have done that too. So I guess if, I don't know, I guess that I would hope that if, whatever, however this vote goes, that it wouldn't hurt our relationship going forward because we've already committed money and we have been a good partner working with them.
Uh, I'll add just a couple of things, I guess. We don't waive fees and we haven't had any discussion of waiving fees on other school construction projects. And with the ongoing work, the athletics complex at the high school, at the addition at Agassi, the school district has been probably the largest contributor of building permit fees in general over the last couple of years. So I, I do think that there is a pretty good precedent to be set in drawing the line and we do provide the fee reduction for projects where the city is specifically a funding partner or are on city property. I think that sets a pretty good standard. And I think that, you know, what other challenges went into putting the project together, it's really been unfortunate that we did the design work and then the location changed. But I don't think that the discussion of the fee reduction should necessarily get lumped in there. I think we do just kind of want to draw what the expectation will be for fee reductions in general. And I think that drawing the line here where the city is a funding partner is probably the right place to draw that line. And then, you know, the rest of the discussion is really around improving process, making sure that we find good ways of putting the funds together to account for what happened with the project that got canceled, all those other things. But I think that the question of the fee reduction should really be, what our practice wants to be for what kinds of projects in general should get fee reductions. It, it would be what I would hope to do, but I also understand all the perspectives around this project, for sure.
What was in the past practice of the city, have they waived any other building permit fees in the past?
So what we traditionally have waived fees for have been projects where the city is directly undertaken and we didn't charge fees for the shower house, we didn't charge fees for the city hall remodel project. But we do still review those plans, we still do the construction. We also, I don't have an example off the top of my head, but we will hear one next week where it'll be on city property and then be the sports complex. So they're requesting a fee reduction and we're both a funding partner and in that case it's on city property. So that would be another situation where we think would probably apply. That could also be any future work that would be done on any other, you know, recreation facility that we have, the schools might pay for, doing work on, or somebody else might pay for improvements in the park. And then, in this case, it didn't necessarily apply. And I don't know of a similar situation where we've been a funding partner, but it's not on our property. But we definitely do charge fees for things where we are passing through money on other grants, things like that, for building projects that are commercially charged fees, but with the school district is a little bit different.
But I do think councilperson Galloway does bring up a good point. The location was changed and agreed to by the city because that's what the school wanted. And so those hundred and six thousand dollars of engineering design fees have basically got wasted that the city's obligated to pay for, they're never going to go anywhere. So I think that needs to factor into some of this too.
Well, I think, I think they offered an alternate location because the cost at the site was going to be more than what we were willing to finally pay for. So I think they offered an alternate location to keep the project alive. Yeah, because they didn't like the size that the city was going to give.
So I just have two more comments. So I appreciate the fact that you brought up that they do routinely pay for, that they're not asking for those to be waived. So I do appreciate that. But I do want to just make a general statement. And may, and maybe it's just me, but I'm getting really frustrated hearing that the city, like, oh, we have to do this to be a good partner. When is it going to be that the city, we have done partnership after partnership after partnership. And so when is it going to be that, hey, the city is a good partner? And, I mean, we've heard this in a couple council meetings ago. I, I feel like it's an ongoing routine and I'm not trying to get out of soapbox, but at what point is the city looked at as a good partner because we have been a good partner? And I, and I'm just getting frustrated continuing to hear that as an argument of why we need to approve something. Again, I'm not talking about the school district in general, I'm just saying, or the school district, I'm just talking in general.
I, I agree with Kara there, that I'm getting sick and tired of hearing it too, that, that we should feel like we have to vote out of fear someone's not going to like us or, or disagree with us. That's part of the gig up here. A lot of people hate me every day because of this. But where I'm frustrated is we gave them seven hundred thousand dollars to the project. They chose, so we need to get that emotion out, but they chose to move the site. We was being transparent and working with them by saying, okay, if you guys think that's better, we'll go ahead and pass that, and we did. So the only reason they're asking us to waive the fee of ten thousand five hundred and some dollars is the third entity made an agreement that they would be free, free and free, and they haven't done their share. So we shouldn't get threatened that we're not going to be friends with them or they're not going to be friends with us if we don't waive this fee. I think with us giving them seven hundred thousand dollars, they can pay the fee that everybody else pays.
Any other comments from council?
I would just like to comment, but I think Kara's comment earlier was that when you're in partnership with partners, all the partners need to kick in, not just one of the partners that would run the risk. I'm not opposed to waiving the fees, I just think when you're in partnership, all the partners have to be active in the agreement.
I'm, I'm not a, at the second, I'm not opposed to waiving the fees. However, they, they, Zach, they do make a good point, seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And a hundred and eight thousand dollars is a lot to, to, you know, throw away, so. And I know they're going to light it, I know there's going to be public use. And again, I just, I feel like we've got to spend taxpayers', you know, money. I, I have a few reservations myself.
I have a few reservations myself.
And I guess I do agree, the fees that were spent on the original design are lost. The project isn't going to happen that way. It probably is at least theoretically possible that we can dust those off for the next time we want to build tennis courts that are city-owned, and that might still be a good location. There's also some valuable engineering work that was done that we can use to apply to future projects. But at this point, the sports complex is already kind of edging on to where these were going to go, that location is probably even not, that engineering is probably not all that valuable here at this point. So that's unfortunate. My, I guess, original point really is just that the building permit fee isn't really going to be recouping that, that's in a different part of the budget, that was capital, we had to close that issue with looking at other things that we could cut or move around, or things that we hadn't spent. And so I think really, I would definitely encourage that the approach be to just set what we would say is going to be our policy for these kinds of applications in the future. And then, you know, we have some lessons to learn about, like we said, making sure that everybody's carrying their weight at the very beginning of the project. I think that's absolutely the most important thing from here. But I do think that the fee reduction probably shouldn't be tied to those other considerations. I think that's probably just the case, that if we're going to be a major funding partner in a project, and then clawing back some of that money and fees, that's probably not what our intent really was when we entered into it. We kind of entered to be partners who weren't going to be, you know, kind of taking money back in that way. But I could definitely see both sides of it, and I understand the way that it would go either way.
Well, and, you know, I think with a reservation, that doesn't, you know, like I said, I'm not against helping them, however, with a partnership, you know, we did give them a lot of money. Now, to be transparent, what sways me, honestly, is the public's going to get to use it, it's going to be good for its own, and let's be honest, people will probably be mad at me for saying this, if I can take a teenager or a kid and put a tennis racket in their hand instead of a crack pipe, well, then I feel like, you know, we've already won, I feel like, you know, we set some positive. I just, I do believe there needs to be a little bit more responsibility going forward. However, just to be transparent to everybody, I, you know, that's my feeling on it. If I can give somebody a positive place to go, kids a positive place to go, families a positive place to go, then it's worth the ten thousand. However, on the flip side of that, you know, I don't want to spend money needlessly, so.
Well, I think Zach's correct, at some point there needs to be a plan put together, because anytime you waive a building permit fee that's cost, the city's losing revenue. They're losing revenue, they'll be losing ten thousand dollars. So I agree, I think there does need to be some policies that are going forward on how these things want to be handled, because if you waive one and you don't waive another, you're set kind of a danger, dangerous precedent. So I agree with you, I think there does need to be some kind of a plan put forward in the future.
So are we ready to vote? Any other comments or questions before Chris takes the roll? Go ahead.
Councilmember Galloway?
No.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number forty, twenty twenty-four, approving a termination agreement with nineteen nineteen Architects. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number forty, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Oh, the recommendation.
Second. Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city entered into a professional services agreement with nineteen nineteen Architects back in twenty twenty-one, I think, no, twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, June twenty twenty-two. And they were going to provide up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for developing construction drawings and construction site plans for medium density and single-family home construction. And this is going to be part of the housing opportunity infill program. The idea for this program, and we do still want to continue it, is that if the developer submits a site plan or chooses some already approved site plans, they can build on that site plan on any infill lot in the city regardless of any other zoning considerations. It creates an opportunity to do a little bit more density, and also to make some of the lots that aren't suitable for building easier. It also takes design cost out of the consideration for the developer, and also generates some ideas. So we think the site plans have quite a bit of value. We work with nineteen nineteen Architects, and so far they've invoiced thirty thousand dollars, and that has included providing some site plans that are going to be of value in continuing the project. But we also have kind of identified on both sides that the project team is incomplete with just us and without architect. They didn't feel like we were getting the final deliverable product we wanted, which was those site plans to be packaged in a way where a developer could access them and use them. And so we want to continue this project in the future, but we think we're going to have to revisit how we're going to put it together. So that thirty thousand dollars that's been spent already has good value to it, we're going to share those with partners, and they'll be able to make use of those, they'll also go into the final version of this project, but we are going to want to revisit how we're going to do that. So it was a mutual decision to separate and terminate this agreement, they've already provided their signature for the termination, they've also provided that we don't owe any additional funds, and they've also provided us all of the work product that was produced, and it is our property to use that work product. In the future, we'll probably look at including a planner, or at least looking at how staff can serve a better planning role, and have an architect that would be a good fit for needing to have a planner involved in the project, so that we can have things packaged and completely usable. The remaining funds that are budgeted for this include a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifteen that'll be transferred, and I think they were on the transfer resolution that already approved, that'll go toward balance on the Greater Tumal Park master plan, and then five thousand dollars will stay in the ARPA fund.
So had the city used nineteen nineteen Architects before?
No.
Because I kind of got the feeling from reading the staff summary that, like you had indicated, you just didn't feel they were maybe a good fit, so that may or may not indicate that you'd use them again in the future depending on the type of project.
I definitely think that they are knowledgeable and capable. It was really that what they were prepared to provide was something that was interpreted and easy to interpret by a builder, but was not going to fill the role that we had where it needed to also kind of be an instrument to set policy, and went into something that anybody could look at and visualize how it was going to fit on a lot, those sorts of things. There was a gap there, we wanted to make sure that we just do it the right way before we go any further on the investment. You can tell that invoicing only thirty thousand dollars since twenty twenty-two, we definitely had a disconnect, and they were being judicious and not overspending or going down a further road. We were being judicious by trying to get more feedback, but in the end, it really is just, it's a good time to break it off, and I wouldn't have anything negative to say about them, I would definitely consider them in the future, if the team included, everybody's going to fill that gap, they could probably still be very good on this specific project.
And as you said, they were agreeable to terminating this relationship.
Yeah.
Council, have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number forty-one, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the transfer of funds to Greater Tumal Partners in Progress for the city of Tumal from the city of Tumal for RAG RIDE twenty twenty-four. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number forty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, the recommendation.
Second. I believe Phil, you're going to take this?
Yes. The city has maintained a separate checking account holding funds for a future RAG RIDE for years, since the last RAG RIDE in twenty sixteen. With Tumal being an overnight town in twenty twenty-four, funds are being requested by GOPI to start the work and planning. The current balance in the account is thirty-one thousand four twenty dollars thirty-five cents. Prior to fiscal year twenty-two, payment was issued out of the city's RAG RIDE fund, it was one sixty-nine, for a hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty cents, which came out of the city's general checking account. Recommending that amount be withheld from the distribution, and that the balance of thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents be issued to GOPI. Fund one sixty-nine has not had any budget activity, so it'd be added as part of the fiscal year twenty-four amended budget. I also would like to say that whenever we have issues like this, you're looking at public dollars being used for private purposes, we need to establish a public purpose for that reason. This one is a little bit different in the fact that the funds weren't public dollars to begin with, they came from the last RAG RIDE, they were the leftover funds. There was a resolution that was passed by the city at that time to open up this checking account and have those funds available either for seed money for future economic events, whereas if there was a new event that was coming, they could apply for those funds, get that seed money to kick off the, whatever event it was, and at the end of the event, reimburse themselves, like a revolving loan fund, and then that money would be returned. With the thought that, should the city receive an overnight state, again, as we have now, that those funds would be available to be used to, as seed money, so to speak, to start the RAG RIDE, planning, funding, everything else that's necessary. And talking with the interim finance director, the thought was, there is no real purpose for this checking account to stay open at this point, so the cleanest way would be just to close that account and transfer those funds over. GOPI has agreed to take on and open up a checking account to be able to run those funds through there. So that is what is before you. I think everybody would agree that RAG RIDE could be considered a public purpose, but since we're not even talking about public dollars to begin with, we don't have to meet that threshold, then just to have the minutes reflect that as well.
So this wasn't state funding that was left over, this was?
Sort of been fundraising. Fundraising, or you had else, and I think it's, I don't, Mr. Lozio was.
Yeah.
Mars here, too.
Has GOPI indicated that they won't be coming back to the city for additional funding? Or is that a possibility?
Well, that could be a possibility as far as the fundraising, either in some kind of contribution or in like, I think what happened, my understanding of what happened last event was, the city does end up contributing a lot in staff time, in equipment and everything else as far as getting everything ready. A lot of those costs were reimbursed back to the city, especially overtime and things like that, is my understanding, from this account, from fundraising efforts, from everything that the RAG RIDE committee had, was able to accomplish.
Any other questions for Phil?
Will those general accommodations be expected again this time, that we would provide some labor and equipment and so on and so forth?
I would imagine.
Yeah. And I'm thinking with that many people coming through the city, we have really no choice in that matter.
Okay, thank you.
They're going to have their first planning meeting, I believe, next week, so I'm sure that they'll come back to the council at some point. Okay, if there's no other questions, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Resolution number forty-two, twenty twenty-four, approving change order number one and accepting the work is finally complete, and approving the final pay request for the twenty twenty-three asphalt street repair program. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number forty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, the recommendation.
Second. Okay, Mr. Bird, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is to approve the last change order and accept it was finally complete for the asphalt street repair area from last year. The street that we completed was North Adams, it was done after sewer separation got complete, because the work being done on sewer separation, pretty stuff Iowa, kind of destroyed that The way we set up these asphalt programs is more like a price list, it's like, this is how much asphalt per tunnel costs if we have this much on a street. There's different quantity ranges that we have, so like, the contract amount and the change order aren't really applicable to what was intended to pay them. And Norris knows that they're used to this contract setup. So the real number here is three sixty-four, one twenty-eight, and sixty-two cents, that was how much it cost us to repair two blocks of North Adam Street. The work was completed, it's been inspected, and this resolution authorized us to quit the project.
Any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is where I ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak on any items that are not on our agenda, and we do have one request, and so I would call for
Good evening and thank you. I want to make the council aware that I filed a FOIA, Freedom of Information, request with the city clerk for a copy of the W-2 file, which is required by Logan filed by January thirty-first. Thanks to Chris, I received a very quick response, and I appreciate that. However, upon examination of the report, I noticed that the report had been altered by Mrs. Kojo, the HR director. She cited, quote, confidential personal information, unquote, as reason for not including this information in the report. I would like to know what legal citation she used to make that decision to withhold that information from an already created report. I was told informally it was HIPAA, because this revolves around what we pay premiums for the insurance for employees. I did some checking with both state officials and HIPAA people, and there is no financial requirement at all. The HIPAA requirement is for the accumulation, storage, and dissemination of personal medical information, not financial. I would like to remind the council that any taxpayer has the right to know total compensation paid to city employees. And I can refer you to the State Code three seventy-two and to the Attorney General's opinion that supports my request. Mrs. Kojo cannot decide on her own what information can be shared. Therefore, I'm asking you, the council, to direct Mrs. Kojo to release the complete report without any editing, and to do that immediately. I think that at this point, again, I've been encouraged, and I've had a lot of questions, but have not talked with her, I wanted you to know this, because you're ultimately the boss of the city. So with that, I'll respond to any questions that you have. Thank you.
Does council have any questions?
I'm going to go about authorizing his request.
We can't do that tonight.
Yeah. It's not on the agenda, so it can be put onto a future agenda if you want to take action. Can we put it on a future agenda?
I don't think you can delay that, if I might respond to that. You have an attorney on the line, the request has been duly filed, and it's an available report that's already available, it's under UKG, all you have to do is push a button.
Logan, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
The city is able to respond to requests for public records in a reasonable time, so we can review this matter and provide a response in accordance with the city's open records policy, and/or if any necessary action item is required for the next city council meeting, we can make sure it's on the agenda as well.
I do believe Attorney Stone has looked at this to some degree in the response, but again, it's not on the agenda, so I think we have to be careful as far as going too far on all this.
So it's been requested to have it put on the next agenda.
That'd be good.
Okay. So you'll get some clarification. That was the only person that wanted to speak on a non-agenda item, is anybody else want to speak on any non-agenda item? Okay, the next thing is, Mayor, City Council, reports or any communications to the public? I don't have anything specific tonight, does council want to make any public announcements or any kind of communication to the public besides the multitude of comments that are already made tonight? I think the next part of our agenda is where we're going to go back into work session to finish up discussion on the budget. So does council want to take a brief recess for five minutes, or just keep plowing through?
I'd like to take five minutes.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and recess for five minutes, and then we'll take that up. Okay, why don't we go ahead and recess for five minutes and then we'll take that up, finish out our work session, and then we'll return the meeting after that. The public is invited to stay for that work session if you want. Otherwise, thank you for coming to our city council meeting tonight if you choose not to stay for the rest of the work session. We're gonna reconvene at seven twenty-four and seven twenty-five, and we're gonna reconvene and start our work session. The remaining discussion regarding FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget, so I would turn it over to interim finance director Jessica Kinson.
Bill.
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 Keith. Okay, we are gonna go ahead and get started. I would call this the probably one of the more low-tech nights that you'll have. We don't have a PowerPoint because it didn't do any, like to put it behind you. So I focused on some special revenue funds where everything could really be kept to one page, and they're fairly simple and non-controversial. And so I'm going to go through them kind of as they are listed on the agenda with with one note that the local option sales tax fund, there was a, it was updated today and there was a new one handed out. And with that, I tried to do a memo capturing sort of some answers to some different questions that have come up so far. I'm not gonna go through that, but if you do have any questions about that, please do follow up with me on any of those items. So we're gonna start with the emergency fund. This has been associated with the emergency tax levy, which is now part of that combined general fund levy, so it basically stops in this current fiscal year. We will not have anything for the emergency fund for next fiscal year. And so this is basically property tax revenue that is required to go in this very specific fund, and then at the end of the fiscal year, it's transferred out to the general fund. And so that is what we are showing you here. This is the fund where we've had, the ending balance is negative because there's some entries that we have done and cleared out in the prior fiscal year that created that negative entry. So it just means that as cash comes in this year, there will be, you know, that will cover the deficit, and we will only transfer out FY twenty-four what exists, which we believe will be one hundred, a little bit over one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So happy to answer any questions about the emergency fund.
And this is part of that change in legislation? This goes away in FY twenty-five?
Correct. It was twenty-seven cents on your tax bill this year, and now it's part of that combined levy. Okay, now to move on to local option sales tax. We've kind of talked about this in a few of the different capital funds and the debt service, and I'll kind of just go through kind of where we're at here. Last year, the collection came in lower than anticipated, much closer to four million dollars than four point five, which is what last year's budget was. As I looked at where we are this year to date and trying to tie out months, we are going over month-to-month from where we were last year, so I've kept everything at four point five million. And then we did not have interest income going to this fund previously, but it is going there now. And to make clear, any interest income that would come in would be split out the same way that the voters have approved. So ten percent for property tax relief and ninety percent for streets and sewers. So the ten percent property tax relief goes to the general fund as a transfer in. You can see that we're planning four hundred and sixty-seven thousand as our amended budget for this current fiscal year, four hundred and sixty-five thousand for next year. And then there is the support, the way that this supports streets and sewers happens in a bunch of different ways. There is a bond in the debt service fund that was for sewer specific, so there is basically money going into Fund Two Hundred to support that very sewer specific bond in the amount of for next fiscal year, three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars roughly. We also are using this to support sewer construction. You just had an update tonight of the projects and things. And a lot of the engineering we're actually doing the cash financing on, and it's, we're able to do that because we have a cash source like local option sales tax. And so we have three million going into the sewer construction fund for this current year, and then one point five million dollars budgeted for next year. The other side is street construction. Street construction is one where you are able to basically cash finance the, a number of street projects, as you'll remember Philip talked about at our last budget workshop, with cash from local option sales tax. And so this year's contribution of nearly six hundred and fifty thousand isn't that much. We're projecting in FY twenty-five, there will be a few more projects happening where we'll need the cash in there to to keep that fund. And then the final one, reuse tax fund. This is tying out very specifically with a line item that we'll point out at our next budget workshop when we talk about reuse tax fund, but it's paying for kind of your asphalt programs and the different things that are not considered, you know, capital because it's just a maintenance activity, but it's paying for for those activities in this very specific line item of which is going to be amended budget at five hundred thousand for the current year, seven hundred and fifty thousand for the next year. And with all of that, that is a lot of spending, you know, more than five million dollars worth of spending, but we are still projecting a balance of funds at four point nine million at the end of fiscal year twenty-five. So it's a healthy fund. That that fund, we're trying to use more of the cash balance, so you'll start to see that happening. And then we'll be talking more about this too, and so I want you to keep an eye on that ending cash balance of four point nine million because as we talk about the Division Three sewer separation project, we'll be talking about using local option sales tax over repayment source on that debt service. Any question?
So how would this get impacted? I mean, if the state, because it's gonna come up in this legislative session, the state wants to take over local option sales tax. So if that happens for next year, then how does this all change?
Well, we don't know that anything would happen for next year. It's been out there, but it would, it would, the change would probably negatively overall impact Tama because there are certain cities and counties that do not have local option sales tax at all. So as you bring them into the fold and have to split and divide, you're probably going to see something, but I am sure that if...
It'd be less than what we do if we can generate them on our own.
Yes. The thing to remember though, and I think this does get confusing, we had a very nice conversation about this this morning with Philip and Tim Oswald, is that this, just because someone buys something in a Tama doesn't mean that directly comes to a Tama. There is a distribution formula set up for each county, and so I think Philip said there was, I think, seventy-two percent of of all local option sales tax stays in a Tama, but it's not really fair to cities like a Tama because you're the ones that are trying to drive the processes to bring more economic opportunity to town to increase local option sales tax, but it supports the county and the whole. It doesn't just individually support the city. So any questions on local option sales tax? Okay, on to the next one, which is the fire bequest fund. And I will say fire, wiper, and police bequest are, can all kind of be summarized up in one thing is when they have donations or sometimes specific grants that don't need to fit in the general fund and need some specific accounting, they would go to these different bequest funds. So the fire bequest has just a basic budget establishing some authority to spend up to fifty-six hundred dollars as we go into the next budget season. As you can see, there's not been any year-to-date activity, but there is some interest that will be investment income that will be credited to this fund moving forward as it maintains a cash balance in the twelve thousand dollar range.
So in all these bequest funds, a lot of its donations and other monies, if they don't use it, does that always stay from year to year in that department?
It always stays in that department from year to year, and it is basically to support their operations or unless there's another specific designation. Yeah, on the library bequest, Sonia talked about this quite a bit when she presented the library budget about how there is the estate that continues to contribute to the community and to the library specifically and how that really supports the purchase of all materials. So it's a very important fund for them as it's picking up some operational costs that then are not in their Fund One Thirty-three operations fund. As you can see, they're looking at also kind of a healthy balance. They're looking to end the year with about eighty-one thousand dollars, and so they can always receive more donations. We just try to put in there what we would expect or what they know about receiving. And then finally, the police bequest. The police bequest is a little bit more tricky in that it's got some more designations for different revenues by type for the drug task force or the dare program for tobacco, and then just kind of a general police department, which includes some seizures and forfeitures and things. So there's, there's a lot of kind of different, you know, streams that are flowing into there, and then those are used for the different purposes that they're coming into, so we track those. Their fund does have quite a bit more money than the other two, and so as we look at where we expect to end fiscal year twenty-five, it would be at about two hundred and five thousand dollars. But anything that come up during the fiscal year where, for any of these departments, where those funds would be available at the amount that they have. So any questions about those bequest or donation funds?
Are you familiar at all with Senate Bill Thirty-One Thirty-one spending reduced in the legislature? It's, it's basically if it would get approved, the way I understand it, right now, if the city wants to change anything with the library as how they operate or their funding or anything, it has to be put to vote of the people. The Senate Bill Thirty-One Thirty-One would change that, require, remember, it wouldn't have to be a vote to the public anymore, and the city council could just change it by an ordinance. So if that would get passed and that would be effective next year, then, and if the city decided to change all that, then do these library bequest comes become part of the city? Instead of them hanging on to them?
Well, they're, they are part of the city. They are part of our cash balance now in our main checking account as we, as we look at that and part of our investments. So these are funds that are not being held by the library board. Library board does have the expenditure authority. I believe the way that bill would work, it was, is it would move the expenditure authority back to the city council rather than keeping it with a separate library board.
Don't they hold the state money? I think they hold a lot of the estate money. Don't they? I don't think the city has control over their state funding the donations.
No, because it's, it's a specific donation specifically for the library. And so, and essentially, that's how it works with anything that we approve out of the general fund, is we're just giving them money and the library board can choose to spend it whatever way. And working with Sonia this year and having just kind of that limited experience, it seems like she very much wants to be part of the budgeting process and everything, so I'm not sure that there would be too much of a difference there.
Okay. Any questions on any of the bequest funds from council?
Well, and I just wanna clarify, so bequest are like earmarked funds. They're for specific purposes, so even if that bill were to go through, they're, these are for specific purposes. We don't get to decide how they're given.
Or, or effectively like a, a donation that might have some sort of restriction. I think they do place general donations into Fund One Thirty-three if it comes in without any sort of restriction, but otherwise, if there is a restriction, it goes into the library bequest fund. On to our next special revenue fund, historic preservation. This fund is basically set up to, was set up to account for grants that were received for, I think Zach is gonna have to remind me of the purpose, and Zach left, so. But there was, I don't know if Phil remembers, that there was a specific historic preservation project that grant funding was received for and the city borrowed money, and that is what's running through.
Well, that was for the plan.
Yeah, they're working on right now.
Yeah.
Historic preservation.
So that is supposed to be wrapped up by the end of this fiscal year, so it's not anticipated that there would be any activity in FY twenty-five unless there would be more grants or something coming in where it would make sense to use this fund for accounting for that.
And did reimbursement grants go in with, were you talking, did you skip that one?
Skip one seventy-six, reimburse my grant. That was for Blessings Soup Kitchen equipment.
Yeah, so one seventy-six is accounting for, thank you for catching that. I apologize, I didn't print out that worksheet, so, but it's a very simple one. It is accounting for the one hundred thousand dollars of COVID-nineteen community development block grant funds that are done on a reimbursement basis with Blessings Soup Kitchen. And so that is the only thing that is in there, but in the future, there might be other grants that are really being done on that reimbursement basis running out of this fund. We just don't have any at this point in time besides the Blessings Soup Kitchen community development block grant.
So when those federal monies come in and the city pays that to blessings to pay off that hundred thousand dollar?
Correct, and I believe area, the ADA or not ADA, the, yeah, Area Fifteen has, is doing the administration on that as well, so they would have some money that they would receive for their tiny services for that. Okay, so those are the special revenue funds that were the quick and easy ones to present, just so you knew that they were happening. The permanent funds are the final two that I wanna just go over tonight very quickly, and these are both cemetery related. The best way to think about this is that the cemetery receives funds that are to be held in perpetuity, and essentially, you can only collect the interest off of that money to help operations. And so Fund Five-O-One is the cemetery memorial fund, and I'll kind of speak generally about both of these. So this is a situation where there are separate investments that are held by the cemetery board that are in our financial system, but they are not part of our general main checking account or our, our CDs, what we would consider kind of our pooled investments held in CDs or I-PAY. These are investment vehicles that are held specifically by the cemetery board, collect interest. That interest is then remitted to the city for us to then credit it where it needs to be credited in either of these funds and then transfer it to the cemetery operations fund so that the revenue off of those investments can be used to help support operations in the cemetery fund. We're generally not talking about a lot of money each year. I think it's probably twenty twenty-four amended for Five-O-Three perpetual care. I'm looking at twenty thousand dollars and probably sixteen thousand for next year, but it's really gonna depend on what interest rates they get on those CDs as they renew. And then the Five-O-One Cemetery Memorial Fund is, is a little bit less as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions on either of those funds, or Jean is here to answer any questions you might have on those funds as well.
So they do, they do have CDs for the memorial fund to two to one hundred and thirty-three thousand for perpetual care. They do have CDs right at about three quarters of a million dollars, but of course, that money is used for the perpetuation of the cemetery, and of course, we've got three now that the city's responsible for, so.
And it's, it's, it looks a little tricky when we give you the cash balance reports by month, of which probably the next meeting is when we'll have December. You will see very little small balances on that cash balance report because that's only reflecting the cash that is part of our pooled investments or on our kind of books in our checking account. And so it's not reflecting the treasury report of the cemetery, but they do prepare that on a monthly basis, and so that is something that is, is available on this public record through the cemetery. Do you have a cemetery board meeting this morning?
Tomorrow morning.
Oh, tomorrow morning, so.
She have anything you wanna say or add?
Not really. I think she, what she said is exactly right. These funds are for the perpetual upkeep of care of cemeteries and specific monuments and amenities within the cemetery.
And that's all that I have to present tonight, and the next budget workshop will be on next Tuesday, the thirteenth, and we'll be talking about a lot more special revenue funds that have some, a bit more complicatedness to them, as well as I'm hoping that we'll, I think, one, the sewer funds on there as well. And then I'm hoping that we can have the general fund ready to present to you as well at that meeting.
Is that now at five thirty or five?
It's on the, the posted meeting list at five. It wasn't changed, but.
Is that okay with everybody if we start the work session on the thirteenth at five instead of five thirty?
Long as the word reminded.
Good thing you said so.
Let's say, does that work for everybody?
And when you come out, pick you up, please.
Because it did say five o'clock. I have to do my calendar for five o'clock.
And the, the one after that too, I noticed that neither one of them were changed. They say five o'clock because it's a special work.
Yeah, and, and I'm hoping that in looking at the what funds remain to present, we have what I would call probably some, some, I don't wanna say simpler ones, but some less complicated ones. of landfill and recycling, and landfill reserve of which, it's just, they get to set their own budget, but they work through our system, so we've been working with them on putting together the different estimates and for revenue and expenditures. And then, there are three funds related to our self-insurance, which are considered internal service funds that we want to show you. That's kind of the backside of, of some of the payroll functions related to benefits, but we won't report those on our budget because it somewhat duplicates money going in and money going out. So, but we do want you to see this, so you can see where the financial status of our self-insured health insurance is at and how we're doing there.
Any other questions?
Mayor Jessica, on the thirteenth, the special session, is that gonna be five or five-thirty?
Five o'clock.
I'm pretty sure I could see us stabilize on one time, but it's okay, if you wanna go at five, I'll be there at five.
I don't have a preference, so whatever, whatever works.
Yeah, we even talked about possibly changing council meetings to start at five instead of five-thirty.
Five is a hard time if you work a full-time job.
So do you wanna leave the work session at five or five-thirty next week? What's the pleasure of the council?
I'm good with anything.
Is it, is it difficult for anyone to get there at five?
I agree with you, with so many meetings, I think we should stick with just the one time, because then we're gonna start second guessing the next meeting all the time. That, that's just my preference, I don't care the other way around.
I like five-thirty.
All right, we'll just keep them all at five-thirty, work sessions and council meetings will all be five-thirty then, so we're consistent. Thank you, Mayor.
Correct the calendar, we're leaving tomorrow.
It's been to say five. And we have had some in the past that five, so.
Okay, if there's no other business, I do hear King motion to adjourn the council meeting.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasu?
Yes.